...in pushing us in directions and they're challenging us now to have hip surgery replacements done outpatient. So that's the mode that we're in now. So you can imagine if you're a patient needing that surgery and you only have to go one place to see your physician, your surgeon, have your imaging, have your surgery, come back for follow-up care and physical therapy under one roof. That's very convenient. So that's part of our plan. The entitlements for the campus here were granted up to over 250 beds for the site here, but please understand that was always a planned program. So Phase One is what we're putting forward now. And the entitlements allowed for a second patient tower and a third patient tower. And that's why you get up to the ultimate bed count of 300 beds that the property's entitled for. So I know there's been some confusion around, did we cut back on beds? No, the answer's no. We're doing the committed Phase One of our plan. And then Phase Two and Phase Three will follow as the population of Elk Grove continues to grow and we see the need is there for expanded services. We've done a diligent look at the population, growth trends, healthcare trends, disease incidence, incidents, and we factored all of that into the model that is predicting around 100 beds to be the right-sized facility to service the community. And that's based on a lot of the changes that we just talked about with things moving to outpatient care. We've seen advances such as our recent investment in an intuitive DaVinci surgical robot. So we started a minimally invasive surgical robotic program in September of 2019 at Methodist Hospital. And that allows you to do surgeries with less blood loss, less pain for patients. We have patients that aren't even taking medications after discharge and just amazing results and shorter lengths of stay with that. So all that's factored into bed need and bed demand. You'll see many more patients cared for at home with home health services or telemonitoring services at home. And care where a patient comes to the emergency department and perhaps today they're admitted to the hospital for pneumonia and they have some therapy that's provided to them. You'll see more of that shifting, present to the ED and be admitted to a skilled facility for a couple of days of therapy and monitoring and then sent home. So we're really looking to optimize the healthcare delivery system to ensure access to care and affordable access to care. Our community is pretty well serviced for trauma care. When you look at the Level Two Trauma Facilities that exist and UC Davis is a Level One Trauma Center. When you are a trauma center, you have a large service area that you're covering, 50 miles or greater. And we retain more than 90% of patients in our community for trauma services. It's very rare that a patient is sent out. And if they are, it's not because of lack of capacity. It might be for something very, very unique that they need. So we're playing the niche role as Dignity Health Methodist Hospital in servicing South Sacramento, Elk Grove, Galt and Wilton. That's our primary service area. And we meet the emergent care needs of the patients, stabilize, treat. If a patient's need goes beyond our capability, say they need open-heart surgery, then because we're part of a strong system, we refer into our Centers of Excellence. So we would refer a patient needing open-heart surgery to Mercy General, which is the largest heart surgical program in the Northern California and the state and awesome results for patients. We would do similarly for patients that present for stroke. We care for stroke patients very well. We're a primary stroke center. But if a patient needs an interventional procedure, whether it's cranial surgery or just an interventional procedure, we would transfer to Mercy San Juan, which is our Center of Excellence for neurosurgical procedures. Similarly, for higher-level NICU services, Mercy San Juan is our higher level for NICU and we would transfer. And you see that within systems. Sutter has an element of that. Kaiser has an element of that. And that's part of the strength of being a system and having Centers of Excellence, ensuring access to care and affordability of care to the residents in the community. So what I can tell you is we have the entitlements since 2013 and we have been looking at growth trends in the community and needs and then also coupling that up with the seismic standards that apply to hospitals in the year 2030. So right now hospitals are under seismic standard requirements and will all withstand earthquakes, but the 2030 regulations require you withstand a Level Eight earthquake, which is pretty massive, and you're fully capable to run operations for three days. So there's a lot that needs to be done and there's a lot of advocacy around those requirements to see if they will loosen because that is burdensome for hospitals. And you would also think that in that sort of a disaster zone, you wouldn't want to keep patients. You'd want to stabilize, treat and transfer out of that area because roads and fires and everything else might be happening outside of the hospital. But we can't count on that and we've looked at what we need to do. And while we could retrofit Methodist Hospital, it would be costly to do that. And we think it's better served to utilize that capital to invest in what our vision was from the beginning and that is to expand the campus here for a medical campus. There will be replacement facilities in Methodist Hospital. And that's why we're so focused on the strength of our programs and services now. We just brought in our surgical robotic program. We are a primary stroke center. A little over a year ago, we became accredited as a chest pain center. So those are investments in our services for care for emergent patients that are coming to the hospital. And they demonstrate our quality and they demonstrate our commitment to efficiency and effectiveness for patients and their outcomes. And we do that because when we move our programs, we want to move from a position of strength. We feature orthopedic surgeries. We're a Center of Excellence designated for orthopedic surgery. We're a Center of Excellence for bariatric surgeries as a Center of Excellence. And we also have family birth center services that are designated as baby-friendly and we provide a lot of supportive services to our patients. We started a volunteer doula program a little over a year ago and we have over 80 doulas now that we provide to patients at no cost to the patient. And a doula is a labor support individual. They don't practice clinical care. That is not their role to interface, but they're supportive to the mother with breathing techniques, encouragement and support because not every patient comes in with a support person that can help them through their labor process. So we're very invested in the strength of our programs and services. We do that through the healthcare we provide. We do that through the community benefit we provide. In the last fiscal year, we provided over $30 million in community benefit to Elk Grove citizens. And that happens through care we provide that is uncompensated or undercompensated for the cost. We also do that in investment of sponsorships with organizations that we partner with to make sure we're addressing all the social determinants that impact health needs such as nutrition, healthy living style choices, all those sorts of services and impacts. We do a lot also with our family medicine residency. And I like to say that's one of the little-known facts about Methodist Hospital. We are a teaching hospital. We have a family medicine residency and we're training 24 physicians at any given time. It's a three-year program, so eight physicians per year. And when they graduate from our program, we retain about 80% of the graduates right here who serve the community either as a hospitalist in one of our hospitals or setting up an office and providing primary care services to residents in the community. So we're very proud of our teaching mission and having a residency. And we also have a family medicine clinic where the residents see their patients and provide continuity of care. So that makes us very unique as a hospital that we have a residency, a clinic under our license, an acute care hospital. And we also have a distinct part skilled facility, which is Bruceville Terrace. And that's close to where Methodist Hospital is now. So it's a very nice continuum of services and part of our investment into the community. We will continue those programs into the future as the acute care service will relocate to the new hospital campus. We're pretty excited about being able to build a hospital. As we looked at the population's growth and the impacts of seismic requirements, that led us to identify this is really the time to build the hospital now. And we also wanted to ensure we had our dignity health support at the corporate level to do this before we went out and publicly announced and communicated that. And we do have that support and we're at the place now that we're very pleased to be able to share that with everyone. And we are on track with our plans. We have spent the past year working on what we call a bridging document. And that basically describes the size of facility, the number of beds, the types of services. And then we go through all the OSHPOD building codes that tell us what size the building needs to be for this kind of design. And that's where we came up with the fact that we'll be planning a 200,000 square foot building, which is actually bigger than our Methodist Hospital right now. It will have all private rooms for patients, convenience. But we'll also be able to design in very flexible care and approaches to care that meet that future trend. So even though we're talking about 100 beds, which is pretty close to what our census is now, but we anticipate population will grow, that bed demand will go down as we shift to outpatient and we address length of stay. So we should be on par there. But we'll have additional treatment space in the hospital such as a dedicated observation unit that we're planning into the building. Those beds don't go on a hospital bed license count. So we'll have additional space within the facility to care for patients. Today, most observation patients are placed in an inpatient bed and taking that capacity away from an admitted patient. But we'll have flexible space, very similar to what an emergency department might look like, but it's a designed observation unit. And we're also planning capacity in our family birth center for labor, delivery and recovery rooms. And those beds are also not on your bed license. Only postpartum beds are on your license. So we'll actually have more treatment space than just what the bed count might suggest. And it's designed with the absolute idea of flexibility for the emergency department, for observation care and for procedural care. So we're pretty excited about the opportunity to do that and to have all private rooms for patients that support comfort and healing. We're very pleased to be able to do that. So that's a little bit about the project that I can tell you. I'd be very happy to address questions that maybe I didn't cover along the way. But I should also mention where we're at now in our planning is we've sent out an RFQ. That's a request for qualifications to firms to be a design-build partner with us. And the design-build partner is the person that would do the actual construction and oversight of the construction and the architectural design. We anticipate having responses to the RFQ within the next few months and then narrowing that list down to maybe two or three potential vendors and then submitting to them a request for proposal on our project with the goal to select our firm by late summer or early fall of this year. That puts us on track to have our construction drawings done within the next year, 2021, to submit to OSHPOD for their review and approval. And that's a process that you're never sure how long or how short it could take. The clearer your plans are, the faster it will go and that will definitely be our goal. We would envision having approval from OSHPOD and be in a position to break ground around 2023 or 2024 and then open the new hospital in 2026 or 2027. It does take about three years of construction to build a hospital the right way. And then, of course, you have to equip it and you have to have all the supplies in and then you invite California Department of Health in to actually license your facility and grant that licensure. So our timeline is what you will see published by California Hospital Association. Most facilities from announcement to opening, it's a seven to 10-year process. Obviously, we're a little ahead of that because we've already done our bridging documents. We already had our entitlements. So we do think by 2027, we'll be opening our hospital. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
That's one of the questions. When are you expecting to break ground? We are in the desert community, which is less than a half mile from here. And all of that is 50,000 miles, so assuming it's not yet.
It is. For us too.
Yes. Yeah, by the way, as someone who spends some time here, I'm hoping never to have to use any of the orphaned people. I'm working hard not to have to visit any of those folks. But I am curious going back to the, because obviously you have significant amount of experience in this area in terms of location with respect to needs of the community. And I think you articulated that pretty well. I'm curious on the Level Two Trauma Centers because it's been reported we need one and somehow servicing the I-5 corridor, whatever that means. Because from my point of view, a significant part of the I-5 corridor is Agland and Byrds. So the question I have is, how does that actually work? I realize we have a Level One Trauma Center at UC Davis and I don't think anybody's talking about that. My understanding was the Level Two Trauma Center at Kaiser is adequate to serve the South County immediate needs in terms of Level Two Trauma Centers. But there's a suggestion that we need a third one, at least to serve the I-5 corridor. And I don't quite get that.
Yes, Kaiser South is a Level Two Trauma Facility. Mercy San Juan, which is part of our Dignity System, is a Level Two Trauma Facility. And Sutter Roseville as well. So kind of have canvassing of the community. And as I mentioned earlier, when you're a trauma center, your primary service area is a much wider net because you need that to be able to have sufficient volume to offset the investment of being a trauma center. It is costly to have specialized equipment for that, but even more so to have physicians on call and readily available. There's a significant investment in being a trauma center and having staff available 24/7 for services as well. So it's a very costly endeavor and that's why the county regulates that. So any hospital can't go out and claim they're going to be a trauma center, whatever level it is. There's a Level One Trauma as well, which is a lower level. And we may pursue that for our facility, but...
I'm sorry, it's Level what?
Level One Trauma.
I thought Level One was UC.
I'm sorry, Level Three. I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry about that. NICU's, it goes just the opposite. Level Three's the highest, but for trauma, Level One's the highest. But a county designates that, so you would apply for that. You would need to demonstrate your capabilities and so forth and the county would determine if that's needed or warranted and if it will be granted. I can tell you in talking to our counterparts in the area, trauma needs, as I mentioned earlier, are pretty well met with the system of delivery that we have in the Sacramento metropolitan area. I do believe over 90% of all trauma cases are handled right here locally and some might be sent out for some highly specialized care.
You said 50-mile radius. Was that for UC, Level One, or is that for Level Two?
Level Two for trauma.
If it's 50 miles?
Yeah, 50 miles. I would need to confirm for Level One, but I would imagine it's larger based on my prior experience. I was down in Fresno for 22 years as the COO at a Level One Burn and Trauma Center. And we consider our market Bakersfield, all the way up to the south part of Sacramento. And that was in Fresno. And you need that large of a distance, again, for all the reasons I mentioned earlier. And Dignity Health has significant experience in planning new hospitals and planning services. We have 38 hospitals in California. We have hospitals in Nevada and Arizona. And now that we have aligned with Catholic Healthcare Initiatives in January 2019, we're under Common Spirit Health as the umbrella organization. So Dignity Health and Catholic Healthcare Initiatives have come together and formed Common Spirit Health. You'll still know us as Dignity Health and we are in the three states that Catholic Healthcare Initiatives are not in. They're in 23 other states. So between the two of us, we're in 26 states of the nation and we're the largest not-for-profit health system in the nation. And I think that really represents a lot of forethought of our leaders to position us for strength into the future. We can advocate for legislation that benefits healthcare without unduly burdening us and unduly placing restrictions on us that might impact access or affordability of care. We think it also positions us well to lower the overhead structures of two separate organizations and economize that so that the hospitals individually are bearing less overhead costs than they would in a single system. So a lot of thought behind that and that we'll be better positioned to continue to reinvest in our facilities and our programs and our staff.
Thank you.
You talked about the different levels. Now, as an example, if I have an automobile accident, and this is actually your hospital that's built here, I could be brought here and stabilized, right? And then if it's really bad, they would then move me to a higher trauma center? Is that how it usually works?
That's correct. It would also depend on how you present in the field. And the EMS classification system might place you as needing trauma care from the start and then you would be taken to the closest trauma facility that has that level of service.
What about for, because I'm in that age group that they talked about, things like strokes and heart attacks, which is what we kind of have to look at more than what we like.
Right.
Would this facility be able to handle those kinds of things?
Yeah, with our primary stroke center designation and our chest pain center designation, yes, we do. We have ambulance-receiving patients that come in all the time. Patients sometimes bring themselves in and don't come via ambulance. And that's why we invested in being primary stroke and chest pain center so that we can respond timely and we have a system if we do need to transfer for care. If it's very obvious, depending on what the patient's conditions are in the field and they know they're going to need an immediate intervention, they'll take them to the closest interventional center. But other than that, yes, we would stabilize, treat.
Something was mentioned that medical care is like a pendulum and it swings from outpatient to more inpatient, back to outpatient to more inpatient. I had shoulder surgery last summer and I can move my everything, everything's great. And it was done on an outpatient basis. I was home within four or five hours. And I know that in years past, people had to go into the hospital and stay there. And mine was relatively difficult. I mean, not only was the rotator cuff messed up, but the bicep was also. Don't know how I did it. That's what happens when you get old, I've been told. Didn't like that part of it. But so do you see, I mean, has that been the way medical care has gone? I mean, do you anticipate that it's going to go back to everybody staying in the hospital five days to have a baby again?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Now it's five minutes. I think back in the 80s, there was a prediction that length of stay would drop way off and we would be way overbedded in the state and that did not happen. But fast forward and you see a lot more in terms of managed care happen in Sacramento. We're a very managed care market. So you can't use East Coast bed demand predictions for how many beds per population and apply it here because our healthcare delivery system is very different. We have insurers and employers and hospitals that are aligned to manage care efficiently and effectively. So our length of stay is much lower and we also look at different levels of service appropriately for patients' needs. So you can't compare one region to another. But generally, things that have advanced to outpatient are going to stay outpatient and you're going to see more of that trend happening and you're going to see more things going home-based care. And that will offset the aging of population that might otherwise demand more bed use. I really don't see us going back to long lengths of stay. Once something's converted, like cancer care, practically 95% of cancer care is outpatient and that's not going to change. And I'm glad you're doing well.
I'm doing fine. If I would exercise more, I'd probably be doing better.
Maybe one of our surgeons did your care.
Yeah, actually it was Sutter, but yeah.
Dr. Barra does a lot of our shoulders.
Well, mine is retired and so I may end up over here.
Okay.
Yeah. Following up on sort of this issue here, I noticed that a number of the other care providers seem to have similar views in terms of size of facilities that they're building with a very notable exception, which I won't name. But the question I have is, is there sort of in the industry, and I realize each healthcare system has slightly, you're looking at different things and that's all great, but is there sort of a rule of thumb when you're looking at the population size in terms of beds to population size? I mean, obviously you seem to be building a, you know, 100-bed hospital now looking, I think we got 170,000, maybe go to 200,000. I don't know what the demographics are off the top of my head. But is there kind of a rule of thumb that just, just as somebody who's a sort of a civilian looking at this stuff and trying to think through? Because I hear what you're saying, it all makes total sense. But what I want to try to do is rationalize when I hear other numbers, like, how could that possibly be? So is there sort of a rule of thumb that you and your counterparts in Kaiser or Sutter or other systems are kind of using?
I mean, you would customize it to the local market.
Yeah.
I mean, generally California will represent a much different bed demand need than East Coast would. And then you might see different regions of California based on the demographics of the population there, disease incidence for the demographic of that population influence that. So I wouldn't want to quote one blanket number, but I would say that generally in our market, we're going to look at that similarly as healthcare experts would look at that. And we would use what makes sense for the population and the demographic here versus taking a bed demand to population from some other market.
So I can interpret that for like where I'm trying to drive at here. So you're looking at, if I heard you right, Elk Grove, South Sac, built in kind of the East County area. And you're looking at age, number of people that are likely to live here in the next 20 years. And that's what you're making, that's what you're using for your sizing decisions. And I would assume if I was in a similar, you know, discussion with people at Sutter, they would be kind of looking at the same thing. I don't know what market area they'd be trying to... But I guess what I'm hearing, I'm hearing very similar things about, you know, a number of hospitals that I'm familiar with in terms of downsizing. And I got to understand that you can't use demographics in Chicago for what's happening here and, you know, what Palm Springs needs versus here might be very different. But it sounds to me, I'm just kind of looking for like, what are the things, the factors that you're looking at in addition to population because, you know, obviously it's a growing area, but...
And disease incidence. So we look at women of childbearing age and what is happening to childbirth rates and then low-weight babies and the need for neonatal services because we've seen that decrease in the state for very good reasons. Because we're better at prenatal care and maternity care and seeing less low-weight babies who are requiring NICU services. So we look at it based on intensive care services that might be needed by the population based on age, by childbearing age, by medical surgical trends and where healthcare is going for different procedures. for different procedures. So it's a lot of algorithms that we have out there that go into determining the bed demand need.
Thank you.
And then the beauty of our campus is we can expand it and build it up to that full entitled bed count. So I do want to make sure that I've addressed that point, that we've not cut back on the beds from the original entitlements. We're actually proposing slightly more beds than the Phase One, and that will be Phase One of the medical campus. That could have a second and a third patient tower on our property, and then a second medical office building as well. So the entitlements show that we have sufficient land and capability to meet the parking requirements and to have those structures of that size. So right now, since we have our program design in terms of the services, we're going through the original entitlements and we're cross-checking to all of that. So we know that we fit within the entitlements, and we have a very open-looking relationship with the city of Elgro. We've been meeting with them quarterly. We'll continue to do that and talk through our entitlements and our project plans.
Do you anticipate when you might add the next two phases?
You never know. I would say, you know, if I had to guess, I would say you're at least talking five to ten years out.
Okay.
So I just have a comment. So I was involved early in the process, and it made sense to me, the Dignity at that time Mercy, I was looking at it over a twenty-year period. And I'm trying to think back, but I thought that they had kind of some plans that we could look at, and they were talking about where they were going to, you know, plant everything on the acreage. And it was my understanding at that particular time that they're going to put a five-story parking garage to help accommodate some of the parking needs. Is that still a possibility?
Well, actually, I only have two copies. I apologize for that. But I can share this. This is the twenty-eight acre parcel that we have here. And you'll see on here, we're building on M L V One. That's what we're in right now. And then this is Elgro Boulevard, so the hospital is up here, and the housing is back here. And then this is the open green field on the other side of us. So this is where we're at right now, and this building, as I mentioned, has two full floors operational and four that we can build it out for surgeons' offices and physical therapy. So what we're building now is Phase One of the design. So the three phases is the entitlement of the three hundred beds. So you'll see that this was projected as four floors, and that's pretty much what we'll be building, is a four-story building. And then it's proposed that we could have two additional towers up to six floors if needed. That's what the entitlements allow. And then we have a second medical office building that would be closer to the housing on the side of Civic Center Drive. So when you get to the point of building out all of this, that triggers the need for a parking structure. Otherwise, surface parking satisfies that. I don't believe it was a five-story. I want to say it was more like a three, but I would have to check on that.
Like I said, it's been a few years since this was all presented. Now, is, are you still considering building it to support Riffertop helipad?
We do plan to have a helipad here, and we'll be working through the best place for that within the project and entitlements. But since we would have an emergency department here, we would plan a helipad to be part of Phase One. Originally, the concept was to have this more of a specialty surgery and maternity, but will be having full service here. And that's one thing I could also mention. It has come up in other conversations because we are part of the Catholic healthcare system. Will the new hospital continue to function like Methodist Hospital does as a community-based, or will it be built as a Catholic hospital? It will continue as a community-based hospital, providing the same services that Methodist does in the community presently. And there are a few unique things that community-based hospitals do that Catholic sister facilities do not do. So we will continue to carry that out. And about a third of the hospitals in Dignity Health in California are community-based. And Methodist was actually the very first one that came into what was Catholic Health in the rest of nineteen ninety-three, and then served as a model for how to affiliate other non-Catholic hospitals into the system.
The last hospital I was familiar with, what the other was, it could have a good health center. So what is a Catholic-based hospital?
Well, we're part of a faith-based healthcare system. And to put it most simply, the differences between services at a Catholic hospital versus a community-based, under the ethical and religious directives of the Catholic Church, we cannot participate in anything that creates life, like in vitro fertilization services, or hastens life, like physician suicide, assisted suicide, or would end a life, like a termination of elective leave of pregnancy. Now, we, as a community-based hospital, we follow the statement of common values, so we also would not do anything to create life or to hasten life, but we can do things such as elective sterilization procedures, and we do that to support patients. And that would be probably the most notable difference. But we treat all patients, and if a patient needs a service, we'll refer them to a capable location or some investments.
Thank you.
Did I answer that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Which isn't the focus of our conversation, so yes.
And we'll always do what we need to to save a life.
I might just ask about, since, I just asked about the helipad because I didn't know about current services going to be changed, you know, we're looking at having more outpatient with the necessity of a helipad and helicopter still there.
Right now, at Methodist, Methodist doesn't have a helipad. So we've had historically to transfer a patient out, which is a pretty rare event. It happens a handful of times a year. But when it does happen, we would scramble to find employees and move their cars to a parking lot, and then have a doctor in the parking lot. We're very great collaborators and contacted my counterpart at Kaiser South, Trish Rodriguez, and we partnered together and have an agreement where now, if we do need to transfer someone out of the area, we will transport the patient to their helipad. We make all the arrangements, and we utilize their helipad to airflight someone out. It's a very rare event, but we think it's important to have that planned into the system of care that we're providing.
Because those two hospitals are very close in proximity.
I think we're quarter of the road.
Yeah, you can see one from the other almost, but we're going to be nine miles away from Sacramento.
Right. And we partner very well with our other health systems in the area, Sutter, Kaiser, UC Davis. We look on things that are concern to all of us, such as behavioral health care needs, homelessness. Trish, again, from Kaiser South is working with us. They're interested in possibly contracting with Methodist for use of our Bruceville Terrace distinct heart skilled beds, for the reason I talked about earlier. They have Kaiser members that may have pneumonia, and they would see it be a more effective modeled care rather than admitting to an acute care bed, admit to a skilled bed, provide the therapy, the pharmaceutical therapy, and discharge back home in a couple of days. So we're collaborating along those, those lines, which I think is really good.
Do you also collaborate well with Sutter?
Yes, we do, all through the hospital council. We collaborate on the issues of homelessness, behavioral health, factors that come forward that concern us all.
Yeah, I'm not in my head, yes, because I know about that. It is, it's really, it's really nice that the hospitals have done that. So I just have one other compliment. So I recently had a family member that's a Kaiser member, needed some heart surgery, and so Kaiser and Mercy General have worked together with the contract, and I think that that's really efficient as far as the cost. It couldn't get more and more expensive than having those teams all available. So that's what I appreciate about the different healthcare providers that we have in the county. They're working a little bit together. So, and that's, I think, just grown over the last few years in recognition of that.
And the one other point I'd like to make in reference to your question about bed need and factor in that, some states have what you call certificate of need. California doesn't have that. So in states that have certificate of need, if you're looking to expand or build a new hospital, you really have to go before a legislative approval process to demonstrate that need and gain that authorization. California doesn't have that process, so really is a whole lot less to be wise decisions in our investments because it is very costly to build a hospital and build beds and equipment and staff. Our project, we're projecting with inflation at three hundred and twenty-seven million.
This is three's four?
Yes.
So the, we have a medical school here, CNU does, and I understand that their, that the physicians coming out there are currently doing their post-education in various hospitals. Are they, any of them in the Methodist system now, or?
Yes, yeah. I sign agreements weekly for medical students to rotate through the facility, or take through our other health systems in the community as well. CNU, yes.
Okay, yeah.
And that can happen with residents as well.
So is that be an inconvenient location? Okay, good.
No. And our residents from Methodist, our family medicine residents, we rotate them to Mercy General, so they get a little different intensive care experience there. And then we also rotate them to Mercy San Juan so that they can gain the pediatrics experience because we don't have a pediatric unit. So you don't have to have everything in the facility or even have a facility, you just have to have a location for that experience first.
Thank you.
I appreciate the questions.
It's really good to go to a meeting and get each straight answers for once, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on and being here. You know, we were talking earlier, and I said, I think a small crowd is not a bad thing because that just means you did everything right. And they really have no questions because you were very transparent, and everything that you put out there, their questions were already answered. So I want to thank you. We're very fortunate to have Dignity Health here in our city, in my district, and in fact, it's only a couple of minutes away from my home. And just to be able to be a part of this and to watch it grow and to have a hospital that has such a great reputation in the community, not just in our city, but all across the region, be here in our city. So I'm, I'm very, I'm very fortunate at that because I'm, you know, a Dignity Health member, but also I think this is great for our community as well.
Well, I'm just saying that it's been wonderful because she has been very transparent with a lot of the different areas that she came to so many of these. I don't even know, but I know I've heard that you've gone to other places and given this same talk. That's probably why you don't have so many people here tonight, because you have been very transparent and very open with sharing what's going on with the community as a whole, the whole community, not just this district and not just, you know, those of us that are a little more vocal than others.
We'll honor that commitment into the future as we have updates, and we'll continue to interface and share that and have open dialogues. I really appreciate it.
Yeah. Please keep it up because I think there's a lot of confusion in the community about all of this, and I think the fact that you have the track record that you have, and the fact that you actually have something real for people to look at and ask questions, and pretty straightforward in terms of answering what are, you know, I think, basic questions with good ones, I appreciate it. So your time is being well spent, whether there's, you know, half a dozen of us or sixty of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. I really appreciate you hosting this partnership with us.
Can I have, keep your secret plan, or do you need a bet?
I have a question.
Let's do this.
I really liked the design of this building and the solar carving and all of that, and so I hope that it will be as attractive as it might ever have been. And then I just wanted to say, wish back for this project, and I know that you're involved in all of this. I came from the neighbors around that area when this particular area was rezoned for the hospital. So some of the concerns that our Sutter's family has are concerns that residents haven't wanted Civic Center brought, right? So fortunately, everybody has transitioned and accepted it, and the people that didn't want to align by the hospital that I worked with, they moved away, right? But the newer residents come in, no, or familiar, they studied the disclosures that doctors were through, and they've been hit in the head, so, and that's why they're moving to leave, they're going to have the hospital.
And we will live within the entitlements, which basically have the colors and the look and feel of the building will be very similar to this building that was built within the entitlements. The actual Phase One structure might be a little different. Maybe it'll look like an L and not a square, but very fit within the major concept.
Because this, this was done in class, and then we have those ugly particles across history, which were really disappointing. I talked to the gal that was involved in this, and she said she was equally disappointed and upset and complaining about what was happening. This is a beautiful, exciting job.
Thank you. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we don't need any.